Yeah, that's my thought. He was in Korea for a while. He was in Korea, yeah?
Your son?
Mm-hmm.
What was he doing in Korea for, working?
He was teaching there.
That's pretty cool.
And, uh, he enjoyed it, I think, an awful lot. We went over to see him. And we were treated like kings and queens by his friends and faculty.
Did he teach, uh, aged, like, young kids or older kids?
High school.
High school? That's pretty cool.
You guys ready?
We're ready.
Okay.
I'm ready.
Is this all ready? We're good to go?
Yeah.
Oh, and Commissioner Petrowski said he couldn't make it. Got his dates mixed up. So we have to make a motion to excuse his absence, correct?
Excuse me.
So we're all set?
I believe we are.
Okay. Then I will go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, November 23rd. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first up, um, we have roll call. Uh, Mr. Baumgarten, could you call the roll, please?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Richardson?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Commissioner Bartis?
Here.
Commissioner Stern?
Here.
Commissioner Pietrowski? Commissioner Kempner?
Here.
And Chair Kapilansky?
Here.
So Commissioner Petrowski is absent today. Would anyone like to make a motion to excuse his absence?
It's all moved.
Second. Could you call the roll, please?
Yes. All right. Dolan?
Yes.
Kempner?
Yes.
Pietrowski? Stern?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, uh, moving on to approval of the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments to the agenda or motions to approve?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Could you call the roll on that one, please?
Bartis?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Pietrowski? Kempner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
And Kapilansky?
Yes.
All right, the meeting minutes from October 26th. Any changes to the minutes? Everyone's good? Or motions to approve?
Motion to approve. The minutes from October 26th.
Support.
Whenever you're ready.
Richardson?
Yes.
Pietrowski? Patterson?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bartis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kapilansky?
Yes.
Communications, I didn't see anything in front of us this evening. Was there anything else, um, for communications tonight?
There was not.
Okay. Then we'll move on to citizen comment. Um, there's no one in the audience this evening, so we'll skip ahead to online and phone comment. We do have people that are able to join us via Zoom. If you would like to comment at this time, we would ask that you dial star nine. Just a reminder to keep your comments to three minutes or less to state your name and address. Is there anyone who would like to comment on Zoom?
Madam Chair, there is no one in the room.
And is there anyone? We did not receive any emails for citizen comment, correct?
Correct, ma'am.
Okay. Then I will close citizen comment and move on to new business, which is the DDA Design Guidelines Overlay District. Anything to report, or you want us to jump right into it?
Madam Chair, I'll, uh, only reference the memo that was left by, uh, your community, former Community Development Director Erin Schluto outlining the timeline and the effect, uh, and some of the work that has gone into bringing the Good Design Guidelines and the Overlay District conversation to the point that it's at this evening. So not only is that included in the council package, but that was made publicly available on the website as well.
Okay. So this is something that we had looked at before some time ago. I think we have ended up recommending approval. Um, at one point of an amended ordinance, um, there were some objections raised, I think, by some members of the public. So I think things have gone back and we've taken a second look. Staff has taken a second look at this and has come forward with some changes to maybe address some of those concerns and also to make the ordinance a little bit more, um, quantifiable in terms of determining whether or not something actually meets, um, the design guidelines. I know we all liked the design guidelines and we're anxious to be able to, to use them officially. I, I think there's a lot here to, to go through, particularly with this Architectural Design Review Checklist. And I think it's going to take us some time to go through it. So I think it makes sense to begin the discussion tonight and, and see if anyone has any big tweaks or, or concerns with the overall, um, direction of going with the Architectural Design Review Checklist. Um, but I, I think this will just be a discussion item this evening and probably a future discussion item too, so that we really have time to get into this. Um, so before we get into the checklist itself, does anyone have anything that they want to talk about in terms of the, the ordinance language? This looks very similar to what we saw before, absent the checklist portion. I know some of you weren't here before. Is it okay if we start with that, or do you want to start with the checklist? What would be everyone's preference?
I would like to start with that part.
With the language of the ordinance?
The language of the ordinance.
Okay.
No objection.
Okay. Do you want to kick us off then, Lisa?
Um, so I, I like that it allows us to have flexibility, um, as well as to tell people that we expect them to, um, to follow the guidelines. What I would like to see, um, under the delineation of the DDA Design Overlay District, that last sentence, I would really rather see that as number one on the design guidelines because I feel like it has a little bit more teeth. And later on, we talk about how this one, right?
Yeah.
Can you reference, like, which?
I'm sorry. Where it says, "All pro- all projects located within the DDA Design District Overlay, or Design Overlay District shall be subject to the requirements of the underlying zoning district and the overlay district." I think that gets lost in the delineation part, and I would rather see that as number one under the design guidelines.
Do you want to move it here?
Yes.
So right below, um...
Yeah, where are we?
So we're...
Can we reference a paragraph?
Yeah, so we're, we're in delineation of DDA Design Overlay District, which is, um, it says Article Five, Division Seven. And if you go to the second one down, delineation of DDA Design Overlay District, it's, um, the one, two, three, four. It would be the fifth paragraph. It's kind of a standalone sentence there. Starting with "all projects located."
I know, it's hard because there's real section, you know?
Yeah. So this is in the, in the actual ordinance language.
Yeah, and can I make one, ask a question since I wasn't here before? At the end of this document that we received for the package, there's another draft ordinance?
Yeah.
And is that the prior, that's the prior one?
Correct.
Okay. There's no date on either of those. So that's, I was just trying to differentiate.
Yes, that's the prior one.
Okay.
And this is the, this is the new language. And I think it'd be helpful in the future, um, Matt, if we could get, like, a strike-through version so that we could easily distinguish between what's been added and what hasn't been added.
So we're looking at the document at the end of the checklist?
No, at the very...
No.
Yeah, it's at the end of the checklist.
It's like, roughly, page thirteen of the PDA. I'm in the draw.
Yes. So you're...
It was easier to count thirteen.
So if you're looking, yeah, if you're...
Eighty-seven pages.
If you're on the whole packet, it's page thirteen of the packet. And it's the actual draft ordinance amendment. Did you find it, Mark?
Uh, the paragraph numbers again, please.
So under, um, Section 138 dash XXX, Intent and Purpose, we're going down to the one below that, Delineation of DDA Design Overlay District. On the thirteenth page, it would be the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph. It's kind of like a sentence, a paragraph.
I have it, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa, sorry.
So I like that sentence. That sentence has some teeth. It says, "We expect you to do this." Um, but then when we go down to the next part, under the next section for design guidelines, it kind of gets a little wishy-washy. "We'll strive to meet the spirit and intent." Um, and I would rather, number one, under the, the design guidelines, be more forceful. And as you read through the rest of them, it kind of tells you that, you know, you, we just want them to meet the spirit and intent.
That sounds good to me.
And then my next question relating to that is, I don't see addressed what happens if the underlying zoning and the overlay conflict.
So our ordinance, as we've said many times, needs to be updated.
Yeah.
There's not probably, that's a very good point. I don't think there's going to be a ton of cases where that happens because we don't have a landscape ordinance. Um, we don't have a facade ordinance. Like, the things where I think conflicts would arise, we don't have those. Eventually, we will, hopefully. So I think that that does have to be addressed. Which one would supersede? And I guess what would be the opinion of the Planning Commission, since you brought that up? What would you want to supersede?
A more stringent one.
Well, not necessarily, because a lot of times overlays relax some of the requirements in the, the base ordinance. We're talking about a community right now, earlier. And there are some relaxed, I won't get into what it is, but there are some, uh, very strict ordinance requirements in the, the overlay in some situations, not many, but some. Will relax some of those, but they're asking for other things. So I think just to say the more strict, uh, shall take precedent may not always work. And I don't know if there's going to be any here. I'm just making the statement that, that might be a little too broad.
It could be. Because there are communities where we'll let you relax on, um, how much brick you have on the facade. If you give us some, um, you know, put a park bench out, maybe a welcome to the city sign or, you know...
Or a situation, there may be very strict parking regulations for residential multifamily. But as part of a overlay,
Mm-hmm.
because of everything else you're doing, and we're thinking about mixed use, all this other stuff, there may be opportunities where that isn't necessarily, the, the strict may not necessarily rule.
That's true.
So...
And I tend...
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I tend to think, given the, the language and the tone of the rest of it, that the overlay is, is much more flexible and, you know, like, "We like you to do it, but we don't necessarily have to." But it gives us the ability to demand some issues. So I'm almost leaning towards underlying zoning, knowing that we're going to fix some of that as, as we go.
So my concern with the underlying zoning is, and this would be a staff thing, I think, um, Matt, that I'd want to know where it conflicts now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Before we went, I, before we went with that?
Right.
I'm inclined to say the overlay, only because I'm thinking of the future and we want this cohesive downtown. I mean, that's the whole point of the design guidelines. I would hope that anything we would write would kind of match that, right? That we would make them be compatible with one another. But if there's instances right now where, you know, this allows something that, that maybe the, the regular ordinance doesn't, or there's huge conflicts, we probably have to look at, at each one of those and see.
I would agree with that.
I'm sorry, that's a, that's a big project.
Somebody who's just walking in.
Yeah.
Uh, when the guidelines were adopted, uh, they were, they were reviewed against the existing zoning ordinance. Were they, were they not?
I think that they were generally, but I can't say, like, each... Right now, our zoning ordinance, I think, is written a little bit hodgepodge, right? Where the, the uses don't always dictate exactly what current uses are today. The parking might be a little bit, um, you know, the parking, I think, is a good example. The parking doesn't entirely match up. The guidelines make recommendations for improvements to the parking ordinance.
General, generally.
Generally, right. Like, a, a shared parking district, I know they talk about, and that would change things.
I remember asking Vivian, and Vivian telling me that there are many areas, or there were a number of areas, is I think what she said, where they would conflict. But she didn't have those exacts at that point either. So I, I don't, you know...
Yeah, that would be good to know.
I agree. We need a clearer idea of what conflicts there, there may be. As I understand it, I may, I might be misunderstanding, but, um, the guidelines are just that, guidelines. The, the overlay authorizes the city to put a, a procedure in place to, um, evaluate changes under the guidelines. But, um, so I think, I doubt if there's going to be any rock-hard conflicts between the overlay and the underlying zoning. There might be conflicts between what the guidelines recommend and what the current zoning requires, maybe. I, I, I am a little skeptical that there is because I think this was gone over really, really thoroughly at the time. But we need to know. And, um, uh, in the event, though, that there's a conflict between a guideline and a zoning requirement, it would be, in my opinion, that the zoning requirement would be the binding requirement. That would just be the, a, a law versus a, a guideline, so...
That is true.
So, you know, um, first, first things first, I think we need to see what conflicts we're talking about. You know, if any, and, and then, then think about how to resolve that.
And the way that this is written with the idea of this checklist is that a person doesn't necessarily have to meet every single item in the, the guidelines.
Correct.
So there would be some leeway there. But you're right, I, I still think we need to know.
Well, yeah, that was, I think there's a consensus on that.
Do you have other things on that, Lisa?
I mean, it starts to go into the, like, the design checklist part of it and then over to that. And I guess one of my questions is, um, the purpose of having the applicant score themselves. I guess when I thought of a checklist, I thought of, like, "Here's the things we would like you to try and do," and then you check it off. I'm imagining great conflict between the applicant scoring themselves and then the city, city scoring the applicant, and...
Can you put that on pause for a second? Because I agree. But I want to see if anyone has any other comments on this text first. Because I think the guidelines are probably going to be what everyone has comments, or the checklist. Um, does anyone else have comments on this, on the text of the ordinance?
Well, I only said that because it's part of that.
It is, right. They do reference it. Yeah, I completely agree. So absent any comments on the section on the checklist, any other comments on, like, the delineation, the intent, any of, any of that?
Well, um, as I understand it, the, um, there could be up to four meetings and maybe more between a owner and the city on this, right? There could be a, two meetings in front of the, the review board and then two more in front of us.
So this takes the, the review board out of it? There's no review board anymore?
Oh.
Um...
I better do my better job of homework.
So, the, the review board is, is gone, and there would be a meeting encouraged, I think, between the applicant and the Community Development Director, whatever administrative official would be in charge of it.
So it becomes a staff meeting?
It becomes a staff meeting, which are encouraged anyways, I would assume, right, Matt? Before you submit.
Absolutely. And we did this for, in order to try to expedite this process, make it a staff function so that they can be, you know, somebody could come back the next day without having to have an wholly entire new, new public meeting where we pull together these officials. It's a staff function in service of the Planning Commission.
Okay, withdraw my comment.
But that wasn't the previous one?
Right.
Exactly.
And I think that's a lot of the reason there was some pushback. Okay, anyone else have any other comments on anything but the area having to do with the checklist?
I, I read through this pretty quickly.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, and I think compared to the last version, it, there's the signs and lighting section. Is there any reason why those are there? Because they seem basically referral to the actual sections of the ordinance, and they don't add anything new?
Yeah, I, I think that that's there just to make a clarification. I, I think that that's the point of that. Um, I can't remember how much the design guidelines get into signs and lighting. I know they make some suggestions on those things. So that's why, I'm guessing that's why it has been included here. Is that right?
That was my understanding as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, it was just really odd. I read through that all, like, more like process and oriented steps here. And then those two were so specific to design elements that were part of this. So I didn't know if they're... So, and they just say, refer to the other sections.
Yeah, it does sound a little redundant because it's already in the ordinance, but...
I did think that too when I was reading through it.
So we, we don't have to close discussion on this. This will have to come back. I'm just trying to collect our comments in, like, a concise manner.
That was one I had as I read through this.
So signs and lighting needed.
Hey, Ms. Chair, Ms. Chairman, you know, you and I traded emails today.
Yeah.
I didn't get this till this morning. And I know it's a changeover in the procedure and that, that happens. I'm sure Bales got it at the last minute, too. Uh, I'm not fully prepared. I don't like saying that because I never, I always try to be prepared, but I'm not fully prepared to really discuss this. So I think we have to bring this back. But I'm glad we're having this initial, initial, um, discussion. I just wanted to let everybody know that we either received it yesterday evening or this morning as I got into work, so...
Yep, I would, I would agree. That's why I, I think we're definitely going to have to bring it back, but we might as well use this time that we have here.
We're here.
If anyone notices anything, to, to lay it out right now.
Yep.
So is the intent to take the verbiage and the new, um, the, the information that Lisa was making reference to on page thirteen, is that to kind of tie into the April 2018 final draft and making that up to date?
Are you talking about the previous iteration?
Yes.
No, this would entirely replace that.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is void.
And that didn't really go anywhere. From the twenty-eighth, so, okay, so wherever this starts here.
So this older one is void, then?
Correct. I think it was just included as a reminder of what we discussed previously.
It's at the beginning of it.
Good. I was, I was confused as to why we had both of them, okay.
Oh, my goodness. You're looking at the design.
I just, I guess maybe a question. I remember talking about these before, but it's been a while.
It's been a long while.
So as Mark said, these are guidelines. So if an applicant comes in and wants to do something, they don't have to follow these? They could still come to the Planning Commission and we could approve without...
So right now, that's how it is. They come to the Planning Commission and we want people to follow the guidelines, right? Because we, everyone seems to like the guidelines. They really bring a cohesive feel to downtown. So we ask them, "Please, can you incorporate," like we did with the Aquatops?
Correct.
"Can you consider incorporating these?" You know, it's in our guidelines, and people generally agree, I think. With this ordinance, though, we are able to say, if we get further into this checklist, "Hey, you don't have, you know, eighty points," or whatever it might be on the checklist, that gives us the authority to say, "We don't approve your plan. You didn't meet that standard that we set forward." Now, there is something in here that allows us to say, you know, "Oh, but wait, you know, you're, you're doing something that the guidelines didn't anticipate that's really great. We want this here. It doesn't really fit in, but we think it meets the spirit of what the guidelines set out. So we're going to go ahead and, and waive that eighty-point requirement and allow you to, to put in this really innovative and, you know, complimentary thing, whether it's a building or use or whatever, well, not a use, but a building or some neat lead feature or something we don't, we don't even know about yet." That would allow us to do that without them meeting the points. But, but this does give us the ability, if someone comes in and says, "I'm proposing this all-steel building, and it looks like a prison," and whatever it might be, we can say, "Hey, no, that doesn't fit in with our guidelines. We're not approving this."
Okay.
Does that make sense? Because right now, we're kind of in a...
Right, and if we deny, they would still, still have a chance to go to the ZBA for approval.
So if we deny, procedurally, I think that's where they would go. Is that right, Matt?
Yeah, there'd be, uh, denial would still follow proper channels after that.
So this gives us the ability, instead of saying, "Pretty please, follow these guidelines," to say, "No, you have to do some of these things."
Okay.
So we're at the eighty-point thing. Can I talk about that?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not eighty points. You're throwing out a number.
Eighty percent of whatever points. So I guess I'm, I'm wondering, because even, because that language is even kind of very wishy-washy, right? We encourage people to meet the minimum score, but if they don't, we can say, "No." Like, we can go ahead and approve that. Um, and I just worry that it's sending two different, like, I, I like the idea of flexibility, but this feels like, "Well, we kind of would like you to try to hit these eighty points." And I guess, like, has, has our attorney looked at that over and said, you know, "This doesn't make the language confusing." Like, "I, I don't want court challenges," because they were like, you know? "Well, you only have to try and meet it."
I think the city attorney has looked at this.
Yes.
But I think that is a very good point, Lisa. And if we look at number three, where it talks about the, the part you're talking about, "The Planning Commission encourages applicants to meet a minimum score." I mean, what happens if we just take out the "Planning Commission encourages" and "Applicants shall meet a minimum score of eighty percent," and then we have the sentence that follows, "The Planning Commission shall have the authority to waive that," basically?
Right. I like that a lot better.
What does everyone else think?
That, that makes sense.
That makes sense, but doesn't, didn't we define, like, "shall" meaning "must"? So we can't say, "You must meet a minimum score of eighty percent," and then "we shall have the authority to grant site plan approval for projects that do not meet the minimum score."
So should...
I, I agree in making that first sentence less wishy-washy, but I don't know that it should say "shall" if we're going to then say "shall" in the next sentence, which is completely contradicting, contradicting the previous sentence.
So I think the first sentence should say "shall." That would be standard ordinance language to indicate it, it must meet that requirement.
So then maybe "may" have the authority or...
The Planning Commission has the authority. Or something like that retains.
Has the authority, yeah.
Yep, that would be fine.
Retains it, whatever language you use.
Yeah.
You know, much like our parking variance, whatever language we used in that.
Right.
There's, there's the proper wordage.
Those are really good points. Continue, Lisa.
Okay, so then, then I'll go, then I'll go back to the applicant scoring themselves as well as then the city scoring them, because that just seems like a recipe for disaster. I'd rather just see, like, a, a checklist, a little checklist, right? "Building is at the sidewalk, check."
Right.
You know? Uh, "Materials used are A, B, C, D, check." Uh, you know? As opposed to this weird scoring system, which feels like it's going to be really a lot of work anyways to try and do it in that scoring fashion for not only the DDA Director, but also the Community Development Director. That just feels like a ton of work. And when this was talked about at the DDA meeting, even some of the DDA Board members kind of felt like it, this was a bit overwhelming in, in that state.
So I get what you're saying. So you're saying to ta- to take this checklist, basically, and turn it into an actual checklist? I have brick masonry, check mark, or whatever it might be.
Right, my, my materials fall under one of these acceptable materials, check. I feel like that's a million times easier than, than this. And I get that, that there might be some flexibility, I guess, maybe if somebody comes with some crazy new age thing that we haven't thought of.
But should a bike rack be given the same importance as a brick building?
Well, that's where I was going. How are these weighted? Where do the points come in? There's no, and I'm, I'm just saying, there's nothing here that says what each category is worth.
I have a bike rack. What's the, how many points is that?
So, that was my number one thing, too.
There's no delineation.
So, we, we do need to go through a process of, of trying to figure out what, um, what would garner the largest score and what would not, as far as how we prioritize, um, the elements in this checklist. That is a, a, one of the pending items that still needs to be done.
So, going on Lisa's train of thought, because I do think that this seems cumbersome. You know, perhaps the primary, secondary, and tertiary goals or something could be lumped together. So, bike rack is lumped with, I don't know.
Linters, low, low impact design and all season landscaping.
Yeah, something like that, like the, the, the tertiary goals are lumped together, but then primary things like a facade made of durable quality materials is in the first category. And I'm, I'm kind of breezing through this, but, you know, some of the more important things are put in one category. The second category is the middle of the road, and then the last category is the very minor items. And perhaps you have to get, you know, eight points in the first category, four points in the second, and two points in the third or however you might get it. Unless, does anyone have any other ideas of how to quantify this? Because I think a checkmark, that, then we could check it, you know? Yes, I have a bike rack. I have three out of the five items or whatever it might be.
And the first part can even be like the, you, you just need all the points, right? Like, your building has to be made out of one of these materials, like period, end of, end of the day. And then some of the other ones can be worth additional points and you have to reach X amount of points to get to that, right? Because I even look at the section on sustainability and while they're really nice ideas, right? Like, I don't, I don't know where in downtown a bio soil is going to fit or, or even a rain garden for that matter. I, I mean, they're all very good ideas, but they're all really expensive ideas, too. So, it's hard for that to be its own section of points for people. Like, what if you can't manage any of those? Do you just get a, a zero for all of those?
I don't think you, I think you break up the points based on the impact of the item. So, I think the rain barrel goes in the category with the bike rack. I mean, those are low cost, low impact things. If I say to someone, put in a bike rack, that's not asking a lot, but if I say, change your whole vinyl siding facade to brick, like that's a much bigger request, right?
Right.
So, I think that, at least that's my thought of how to split things up so that the big things are lumped together and you have to get so many big things and so many middle things and so many little things. I'm just throwing that out there as an idea because I completely agree that this is too complicated.
And I would say that, you know, bike rack being a small one, well, we, we get bike racks in our town. Well, bike racks, you put in a bike rack, you can lose a couple parking spaces. That's a big deal.
That's a big incentive already.
So, you know, who weighs these, these things? Now, let's go back to the first one, exterior materials. I mean, you pretty much named them here. You said the one we don't allow, which is vinyl siding downtown. Well, we all know that. So, how, and I'm just asking, how would someone score points by, you know, the answer is yes, I have one or more of these materials. I'm done.
I, I agree.
Or neon paint.
Yeah, what else are you constructing your building out of than these materials?
Yeah. So, I, I think, I think what you're saying is it's, it's adding complexity to something, at least the first category. I mean, you've got them covered here.
It's, it's, it's even more just subjectivity at that point.
Well, as you get into wall colors and, and, yeah, and you get in a lot of things, it's subjective. It's absolutely subjective.
Because the point scale is, is a little odd, too. So, maybe the whole structure of the, the ranking is what should be kind of looked at, whether it's weighted or there's tiered.
There's got to be a way to, yeah, to determine whether they're meeting the guidelines or not. I think we're trying to do this in a quantifiable way. Maybe that's the wrong way to do it.
Right.
I think your idea of just having a checkmark and saying you hit three out of, oh, I'm sorry, Lisa's idea. That's who I was talking to. The three out of five have to be met out of this section and pick, I mean, the one hundred points to zero points in that is...
It's confusing.
Confused, like seventy-five and twenty-five and what does that really mean? But if you have, yeah, for, I'm just using the exterior wall. I mean, maybe you have one out of those five or however many are there. And then section two, you must have two out of five. You either have a bike rack or a rain barrel or something.
Well, that was what I was thinking, but I'm just, that is just my off-the-cuff thought of how to make these into a checkmark.
Can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Please.
On exterior wall materials, ba, just based on like the checkmark, the way it's, the way I read it is you'll get more points if you do more than just...
That's what I was just going to say.
Put brick on a building. If you do brick with limestone and some wood, you're going to have a much nicer looking building than if you just had a stucco building. So, even in just that top section within there, you know, you'll get extra, you'll be scored better if you're checking three things versus one item. Does that...
Or do you get, or do you get points for each one? You know, that's, that's why it's confusing.
Instructions aren't pretty, aren't clear enough to know if each section is a total of one hundred or, or not, like how it's composed.
I read the whole, I read this whole thing being one hundred, right?
I, I don't know. That was confusing.
So, yeah, so that's, um...
Is this something our new planning consultant, which we hadn't talked about on air yet, that they would have some input on something like this working in other communities?
Uh, yes, they would be filling in the role of the, uh, ex...
Do you want to describe what's happening right now with the, with Erin, Ms. Schluto leaving?
Sure, uh, for the, for the millions watching at home, uh, Ms. Schluto has left her position as the community development director. Uh, we are looking for our next community development director, but in the interim period, uh, we'll be bringing on a planning consultant to operate in support of the planning commission and the ZBA and then also serve as the city zoning administrator until that next permanent community development director can be hired and onboarded. So, uh, this will be the one and only meeting, um, where I'll be subbing in for, for this role. I'm more than happy to come back and visit, uh, but you'll have an actual, uh, planning professional uh, working in support of this board, uh, throughout, uh, even in the interim period as well as, uh, uh, when the new community development director is, is hired on and onboarded.
And someone we know.
Yes, yeah, so, um, I, in the midst right now of, um, working out the details on just having Carlyle Wartman continue their consulting services with us and carry right on through the master plan into, uh, remaining as a planning consultant.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I would be really interested to hear what their ideas are.
Especially after going through, because they reviewed all this when they looked at our master plan, when they were starting the master plan work. So, they're probably more familiar, familiar with it than we are, most of us. So, um, I would like to hear some input on them because this is really just, you know, there's, I understand what's trying to be achieved here, but I don't think this does it. And it becomes a checklist and like everything else, that's a checklist. You just want to get that point. And that, that's really not the spirit of, of, of what we or anybody else is trying to do.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
We, we went through a similar, um, quandary with our marijuana merit scoring process as well, uh, where we tried to take subjectivity out of it, but we had a finite number of items that we wanted to see incorporated into the applications. Uh, we gave each of them a specific score. And so, it was not subjective. You didn't work within a range, but if you got it, it was, some things were scored higher than others based on the overall priority, uh, and the intent of, of the marijuana scoring process. So, um, that might be a parallel to this item. If this planning commission sees some things as being more, uh, you know, it could be twenty-five points and the next thing down could be twenty-four and the next thing down could be twenty-three. Uh, and if they get it, those are the points allotted. But after going through that process, you would have a score generated, uh, that you could work against from an eighty percentile range if need be. Uh, that might help somebody, an applicant, understand really what the city's intent here is uh, and what items will give them the most points as well as what items would be, perhaps add-ons or easier to get to a site where on the iQGPT they could get that score up by adding more of those items. So, uh, it was, having, since we saw a similar quandary there, I didn't know if that would be useful information in the conversation here this evening.
Yeah, I think that's very useful, and if we can come up with a clear, concise way to easily quantify this, because I do think there are some things in here that are more important than others, right? The building design being primarily important.
Building massing, yeah.
Yeah, those things are really important. Then there's some smaller details in here that would be, we would love to have it, but it, it, it's not going to transform the site the way that the building design and massing materials would. So, I like the idea of throwing it to Carlyle and seeing what they have. I agree with Lisa that it's overly complicated. And I think we're all kind of want to implement these design guidelines, like the ordinance language in general, but are just unsure what to do with the scoring.
In this format.
Would everyone agree with that statement?
Yes.
I know everyone hasn't talked, but... Mark, you're kind of quiet. Do you agree?
Uh, I, I, I have two things. One, I'm, I'm a little hesitant to finalize action on this until we do get a new permanent planning director. That's going to be the person that has to actually implement this thing, uh, you know, before any of these projects ever get to us. I agree that, and I, I only, geez, I got this this morning and I had something else that took me out of the house all day long.
Yep.
And I just haven't had much of a chance to look at this, but, but I do think it's overly complicated. And because it's overcomplicated, it kind of gets away from the spirit of the guidelines, which are, we're not trying to reduce this to a formula that you have to walk through for every little thing you do downtown. We just, we want to promote, um, solid and attractive design. And we, but we want to, we want to be flexible in how we do that. And we don't want to impose too many, um, hoops to jump through. To, you know, and I, I, I don't see any prioritization in this, uh, any weighting of these factors. I think the guidelines themselves probably will tell us what the most important factors are and how, therefore which factors to weigh more heavily. So, I think any, any scoring system should be tied to the guy, the actual guidelines themselves, you know? And I don't know where, I don't know where this came from. It just came from copying the marijuana ordinance or, or no. But, um, uh, you know, I, I, it has to all go back to the guidelines and the guidelines themselves. We have to remember are flexible and, and not, you know, we're, we're trying to promote this. We want them to come to the table with exciting designs. We don't want to, we don't want to just have a back and forth with everybody about every little thing, you know?
Agreed.
I think what you're saying is you don't want designed by checklist.
Yeah.
Yeah, like a more organic process.
Yeah.
Exactly. Becomes a checklist of filling in boxes and we run into this all the time. We're a bureaucracy like a lot of other people, but you don't want it to become, you have to fill enough, you have to check enough boxes.
I have a quick question, too. These guidelines were approved by the DD, DDA, correct? And, and...
Yeah, they, they've reviewed this items. They didn't really have an, uh, approval role in it per se, but they've, it's ultimately this body that'll be the approving entity.
Are we approving or recommending approval?
Have they ever been acted on officially by the city yet after all these years?
No, no. So, to Vice Chair Smith's, or Vice Chair Smith's point, uh, this will be incorporated as a zone, as a zoning change. So, it'll be recommended by this body to the council for their consideration.
So, we could actually, this organization could actually look at the guidelines themselves and, and tweak those if we wanted to. We could do that?
No, I don't think we can do that.
I think that, that part of this process has been, sort of has, has been closed, um...
Well, that's what I'm asking.
Well, I mean... I think it's in the memo, in the memo. It, it has like the three different things that need to be done.
So, that's not to say that they're closed forever. They haven't been adopted by city council yet.
Okay.
But I think we would have to keep in mind, if we were to say we want to tweak them, I mean, that's, that's different than just changing the ordinance, right?
It is.
It'd be a big thing.
I'm not in favor of, I'm really not in favor of going that direction. I just want to know where we stand.
I think they're a fluid document, like, like a master plan is a little bit of a fluid document, right? We're always, we're tweaking that. They haven't been adopted yet. I think we would want to send them a council in their current form. And then, you know, five, ten, fifteen years from now, if things change, sure. That's, that's my one concern about waiting. I agree that the person that comes into this role will have to be the one to implement them and it'd be great to have their opinion, depending on the timeline of that, though. I mean, these have been languishing for a while. I feel like we've kind of gotten lucky with people being willing to cooperate with us on our requests. And I really want to have something that is enforceable, so...
Everybody does, but timing isn't always what you want.
Correct. The timing is not always what you want.
I mean, I think if it was simplified, having another person come in isn't so problematic. I think in this sort of form, that becomes, because that's just a ton of work for any, anything that comes forward. So, I think if we can simplify it and make it easier for them, then it's easy to do it before we get somebody in that position.
So, so with the draft ordinance and the direct link to the design review checklist that's here, is that set in stone that that's the method for evaluation of application of the guidelines themselves? Because I'm just curious if there's other ways that, that DDA design guidelines can be encouraged through the procedural process that the ordinance is going to be adding without having that checklist piece.
There's, we could, we could suggest to the council any way that we want. So, if the commission in general is uncomfortable with the checklist and is interested in a more, uh, objective approach, kind of how special land uses are reviewed, right? We have this list of criteria and it's really an objective analysis by the, the staff whether or not the particular use meets those criteria. I mean, we could go, that would be the opposite end of what we're talking about here, right? This is a very subjective way, once it's actually fleshed out, to do this. That would be the complete opposite, much more objective, gray way to do it. So, maybe the best direction we can give to Matt today is if the commission prefers something more objective or would like to try to see Carlyle come up with something that is more quantifiable.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Take all the subjectivity you can out of these things because, uh, it's tough enough as we've all been through these before.
The only advantage of the checklist that I got when I read through this was it seems like it forces an applicant to think about the components that are in the DDA guidelines.
That's absolutely true. That is.
So, you know, that's, that is a very strong hammer or, you know, carrot to, to say, here, this is what your score is if you looked at, and if you haven't even looked at the guidelines themselves, so...
That's a very, very good point, Joe.
That is absolutely true.
So, that, if that's the intent, maybe, you know, there could be other ways if it doesn't need to be part of our process or if there is a checklist or something.
I think that is a very strong point.
Or maybe it's just a checklist for them without any of the city scoring on it so they know what they're doing. They know that they're reaching their, they're trying to do it even though it's not really going to be...
The checklist could be a tool.
Right, like a...
Yeah, yeah, that's why I was, yeah.
Instead of a, a litmus test or a stand or fall type of, uh, thing.
And it helps us also.
We'll consider this. We'll look at it. We'll consider it, but it's not actually like giving you points on anything.
Well, then you could throw it back to the applicant, too. Like, you've checked off that you meet the building elements. You know, how do you meet the building elements? Because staff seems to think you don't or whatever it might be. How, how do you guys feel about that, Matt? I feel like that's a little bit of a middle-of-the-road approach.
Yeah, I, I think the points well made is, uh, talking about the next person to come in. The next person to come in, from a staff perspective, the expectation is that they'll know the text of the guidelines themselves. Uh, it was very well put that the checklist itself, the checklist document is a communication tool to an applicant. It's not, it, that was a very well, well-made point and it's, I, um, I appreciate you bringing that focus back in there. Yeah, so I, I think that's a great middle ground. I think that's a great place to start.
Yeah, it's a good tool. Yeah, I like that.
Okay, so, we agree that it's great to have some sort of checklist document that the, the scoring maybe isn't our preference, but we do want to bring the attention to these items, um, to the applicant's attention. So, maybe the language gets changed to reference a checklist instead of a score. And I think we'd all be really interested to know what specific items Carlyle would include on that checklist because the guidelines have a lot of information in them.
Yeah, that's a big, yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot to go through if you're an applicant or an architect.
Or a planning commissioner.
Yeah, yeah.
Or two years removed from it.
Yeah, all of those things.
We don't want to be designing their buildings.
No, we don't want to be designing, please.
Do not.
And like I said, we don't want to design by checklist either, but yeah, as a tool, I think it's a great idea.
And I assume that's what you guys were trying to get to somewhat with the, the marijuana businesses, too.
Yeah, we looked at that as a, a sort of a statement of values as much as anything else.
Did a lot of those applicants see it as more subjective than objective, ultimately?
No, I think we did a pretty good job of, of making sure that it was either you got those points or you didn't. Um, we argued it through two, two court cases.
I understand. That's what I was referring to. I don't want to say it.
Yeah, uh, and then through, through an appeals, an administrative appeals process as well. And so, I, I think, uh, our applicants did appreciate the fact that, um, you know, it was a sort of a pass-fail allocation of points. Uh, the only items that we would be, um, the only items that we may look at and doing again was doing it that way didn't account for scale. So, if you had, if, you know, we incentivized plazas, if you had small plaza, big plaza, multiple plazas, that was an area where you just either got those points or you didn't. It didn't account for how well or how much, um, of an improvement that those items brought to that site.
See, that's what starts getting into this because, you know, even these, and I'll go back to the exterior materials. You know, you have six or five or six of them here. Some are probably more desirable than others. But you start getting, you know, a minimum fifty percent of this, say, brick, for example, and less than ten percent of EIFs. Now, that's a bad material. We've been there. But the point is, we, we, the city may prefer certain materials. Not you can't use them, but you start getting percentages and things. It just turns into a big mess. So, you're talking about the plazas. Well, they could have a plaza this big. There's our plaza. We get the points. And it becomes suggested, you know, uh...
Certainly there were trade-offs, you know? We, we had, we didn't set them in on standard and some of those things. And sometimes, um, an applicant read that, understood what we were going for and, and did it. And sometimes they went for the checkbox. I don't know. They said, hey, three by three is a, is a plaza.
Plaza.
So, give me my points here.
Right.
So, you know, it, it varied by applicants as, you know, planning commission has seen year, time and time again. You know, it varied by applicants, as, you know, planning commission has seen year, time and time again.
So, I guess my question with the marijuana, how it relates to this, if the city is scoring this, would then that have to also be an open meeting?
No, in this situation, um, the, we, the ordinance is written for, um, this can be an administrative process. We feel very strongly in that.
All right.
The, uh, creating a public body and a review board would have required, um, that to be a public meeting, uh, but writing this as an administrative process, which is ultimately just a recommendation rendered to this body, which does meet an open meeting, uh, is how we maintain our open meetings, uh, requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, does that provide you some preliminary direction?
Yes, thank you very much.
And I think we'll have to discuss this further, um, and see where it goes. I know I, I personally am just anxious to get this through, so the more we can continue the discussion at future meetings, the better.
And we'll, uh, absolutely get these items to you, the changes much sooner than we did in this time, and I do apologize from, on behalf of administration, that it came to you, um, like, like 24 hours in advance, maybe, for, uh, but not, not by much. So I do apologize for that. We certainly strive to, to do better.
No worries.
No worries, it's
We understand.
It's an unusual situation.
Correct.
Well, I, thank you.
Got some big, uh, big shoes to fill.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so we'll look forward to that, then. Are there any liaison reports?
Environmental did meet, uh, we welcomed two new members. The, uh, maybe Matt can chime in on this. The, the main thing we talked about at our meeting was the possibility of putting, um, charging stations for electric vehicles in Berkeley. Uh, over a course of many months, there have been, um, there have been some conferences, uh, uh, by a small working group, uh, which I'm, I'm included on that, and we've listened to presentations from, uh, at least two, um, vendors or vendors' representatives, uh, pitching their ideas for charging stations. And, um, I think we're still, again, feel free to chime in, Matt. Um, I think we're, we're still trying to scope the project. I think, I think we're all agreed that it's a good idea, that we should do something. We're, we're trying to really scope the project, I think now. How many stations do we want to start with, um, a small number and then expand, or a larger number? Maybe we can, we can get a better deal if we get more stations in. We're also grappling with where to put them. You know, obviously want them in places where they will be used, um, which means, uh, places where cars will be parked for a, a length of time. So, uh, there's all these things, and, um, but there is a lot of interest in it amongst, at least the people that have been working on this project. So, um, so I think we'll, we'll, we'll try to firm up, uh, the, our ideas on it. And, uh, I don't know if it'll require any action on the part of the planning commissioner or not, but, um, it's definitely, uh, preparing for the future. So, uh, Matt, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, you put it well.
I have a question. You mentioned vendors, so these are going to be for charge, charging, I mean, a fee charging?
Well, that hasn't been, um...
You'll get a lot of flack if the city, the taxpayers of the city are charging people's cars.
There are, there are different models. Uh, some, yeah, put a card in and pay for it. Others provide one free and get everybody used to that idea.
City Hall, or in front of public safety, or something.
Yeah, um, I, I don't, I don't think we would make any unilateral decisions on, on something like that. Uh, we're just trying to decide what's the most workable path forward.
You, you bring up a good question. Uh, charging for parking is prohibited by ordinance in the city of Berkeley, uh, for all public lots. And so whether or not we are charging for parking, or for the power supply during that parking experience, was a question that we seriously had to try to address. So, um, we, we'd like to be able to offer something as a benefit to the public at large, uh, for those that have adopted, uh, you know, our purchased EV vehicle. Um, so our, our ultimate goal is to provide those at no charge to, to individuals.
I don't know if I agree with that, but maybe that's not my decision.
Yeah.
I can understand a, a, a demonstration unit or two here somewhere, but around in the, the parking areas, you know, if you want to fill your car with gasoline, or with electricity, you should pay a price for it, either way. I don't think the public wants to pay for all these things, but that's, that's just a matter of opinion.
Well, my, my own opinion is, I don't feel as strongly about that as I do about making whatever we decide work. Make it a, a feasible thing, make it a, 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 a part of the picture, and not just something that sits there and, and nobody uses or is even aware of. So, whether to charge or not charge for it is a part of that, the thinking that goes into that, I think.
Thanks, Mark. That's an interesting conversation. I, I would like to, you to keep us updated, if you can, on that, because I'm interested to see what happens, too.
I, I certainly will, yeah. Uh, we have a couple council people that are actively involved in this, so we're, we're trying to move it ahead.
Good. And I think there's some grant opportunities out there, too.
Oh, yeah.
There's that.
Um, thanks. Anything else on liaison reports, from anyone?
For DDA, um, there was a large discussion about the, um, the plaza at the high school, um, and the artwork expenditure. The high school, or the school district wanted to use a local artist, but it was going to be significantly more money to have a sculpture done by them. Um, there's a lot of debate about that, and then they, um, ultimately decided to approve a slightly larger amount of money than budgeted, but not a whole lot. So, they're looking, maybe they were talking about like a transitory art kind of thing. They expect that to be totally ready to go in spring, by spring. And they have, um, given approval for 47, I think, bike racks to go along Coolidge and 12 Mile. They're going to, there's two different styles, so they're going to kind of have a uniform look throughout the downtown. My own personal side note, maybe we need to look at some of our, our, our bike credits in that case, because I kind of like the idea of it, of the DDA having a uniform. Their idea is this is step one, they want to add more bikes, again, later on. And so that was, and then they talked about the guidelines a little bit.
Cool. Okay, um, any commissioner comments from the group, or anything else from you, Matt? I don't have anything.
Uh, I was just gonna give that update on the planning consultant, so that's already been done.
Oh, the master plan was adopted, right, approved by council, so there's that. Okay, if nobody has anything else?
I'm still tired from last month's talking.
Okay.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everyone. Enjoy the holiday parade.
Likewise.
Um, okay. Any motions to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Could you call it a roll, Matt?
All right, Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Ketrowski? Smith?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Campner?
Yes.
Kapalinski?
Yes.
All right, motion at, uh, 7:58?
Thanks, guys.